Your patient, you're going to call this to order at 6:07 PM. Welcome our guests. This meeting is called recently for the purpose of figuring out what our next steps are going to be with regard to budget timeline. But let's see if there's any, is there any interest in other agenda items? I had asked Scott to provide an update, if he could, on the going-onsover callous that I've been made aware of in part of the Articles Committee.
Right, and I would be interested in maybe making a motion about the budget.
Okay, well, that will come under the action section if that works for you.
Of course.
Anything else you guys want? Okay. So back to our guests, welcome. Was there anything that people want to talk about specifically? Or are you just here to observe?
Yes, to observe.
Just to observe, okay, great. Well, let's get to it then. So discussion item, need for advice regarding next steps on budget and teacher contracts. Bill, do you have an intro to this topic?
I do. I handed out, I'm sorry, I only had a few of them, so they're out there, what I've left in the audience. And if we have any extras, we'd like to get them out there. I provided a timeline, the possible timeline drafts, just to kind of say, what are the timelines that we're looking at for possibly either a local budget, if U 32 were to put a budget forward, or a merge budget? But before you made that decision, I, the reason I, in consultation with Adrian, said I think that you as a board should have selected an attorney, that you get fiscal, and fiscal guidance on fiscal statutes, and on timing of warning statutes, to confirm what I had put together here, and regard with what's going forward with Act 46. I think you as a board should choose who you'd like. I have names of folks that we've worked with for the past three years, who've advised us through Act 46, but you could choose someone else as well. And I think that that's something you should consider as a board. You may or may not want to do that. So that's what I bring you is that you have some important decisions. One of the things that's a critical date that's at the bottom of this timeline is by April 15th, the board needs to notify teachers, either by offering them a contract, and if you don't offer them a contract, they're free to, to look at other places and other physicians, and along with ESP has the same requirement for that. And if there are any reductions in force for the next fiscal year, you need to take them by April 15th. So you will see that either, you can look at those, usually the practice in Washington Central has been that we wait for a budget to be adopted at town meeting. We usually have the contracts all ready to go, we hand them out as quickly as possible, and teachers have 30 days to return contracts. There is a hiring crunch in Vermont right now for certain endorsed positions, special educators, math, foreign language, speech-language pathologist. If we're not hiring now, we won't be, after April 1st, there aren't candidates. So I wanted to make you aware as a board of the timelines, the pieces that play into and out of this. If you have questions or things I didn't cover, I'd be glad to answer them, but those are kind of where you sit as a board right now.
Okay. So in terms of the two scenarios, the merge budget, there's nothing to do at this stage. We're waiting for the injunction before we can call the organizational meeting.
Yeah.
In the case of...
And I just want to correct you, we're trying to figure out who calls that meeting right now.
Ah.
I keep that note.
Because the agency called...
The initial one, and that question's been asked back to the agency, but we have not heard back.
Okay. Okay, important detail. In the case of a U 32-only budget, we could potentially call, warn a local budget. Other schools have for town meeting. We're not sure of the legal legalities of that.
That's why I think you need counsel.
That's why you're recommending.
I'm recommending counsel, too. You choose who you'd like. And the four people that we've worked with have been, we've worked with Scott Cameron's firm, we've worked with Pedro Lynn's firm, we've worked Chris Leopold's firm, and we've had Paul Giuliani, and some of the schools, the four districts that are in the suit of the helping with the attorneys, Charlie Marion, David Kelly, and I'm forgetting the third one.
NS Meglio.
Thank you. NS Meglio.
Other questions?
Sorry, just to be clear, then the action is to ask for advice?
That's Bill's recommendation at this stage.
Yeah. Are you, is this because we're so uncertain of the legal...
Yes, I'm uncertain. It's your choice as a board who you want to seek advice from. I'm asking you to make that determination on who you'd like counsel from.
We, so different scenarios at this stage. We could disregard Bill's recommendation and go forward with no action or proposing a budget, or we could seek legal counsel. I guess the question is, in the state's eyes, Act 46 is, you know, we are a unified union and we're to move forward on a merged budget, but we don't have a way to do that right now. So is the, you know, is a, is a vote on a U 32 budget proper? Does it have legal standing? I guess that would be the question you would ask.
And as, but as far as I understand it, the other statutes, like the ones I mentioned, does have not been...
Yeah, this is where I'm not going to get into the debate anymore.
No, 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 I'm just asking.
I just want to say to you that, this is why I think you need legal counsel, to talk, to let that through. And you should choose someone that you'd like to use to do that. You may choose not to do that, and that's fine, but that's what I'm recommending to you.
Okay. Is there any, what if we were to, for example, as I shared with, with Kari and Adrian and you and Stephen, the idea of warning the U 32 budget, then we can, we can at least, you know, lay down that marker and then, you know, consult with attorneys along the way. It just seems to me that I have this sense that there's this weird game of chicken going on, in which our budget is kind of the piece in play, and I would like to take it out of play, because it's just too important to, to have it slip.
I agree with you. I said to, I said to the association last week, my main goal is protecting their jobs right now. But I think you need advice, and that can happen pretty quickly. I think you can still hit what you said in your email, you'd like to have an April 9th election. You could probably still do both. I mean, have the legal advice and then decide to warn it.
Okay.
Do any of the firms on your list have particular expertise in this arena? Or are they all far pretty...
They're all, except for Paul Giuliani. And Paul Giuliani's work, when he has worked with schools, he's usually been on bonds and finance, not so much on Act 49, 46 area. The other three firms I've listed are, work with school districts, and there are others as well. Steve Tissell's another one, we haven't worked with him. So I mean, there are others that, there are three, there's really about four or five down to Rocco Martin. They're maybe, those are the five that I know that do school work.
Chris Leopold has worked with us specifically on Act 46. He's been advising on...
That's who the Articles Agreement Committee selected to work with.
Yeah. Which I guess you haven't had, I've been on a couple of conference calls with him. I would have no hesitation consulting with him, based on the little I know. I mean, you definitely have some expertise in this particular law.
I hate to say this, this is not a comment on the legal profession at all, but it just seems to me that we've had a pretty steady stream of legal advice through this process, and we don't seem to have really gotten anywhere. And I'm sure it has nothing to do with the quality of that advice, which undoubtedly is very professional, but I think at a certain point, you know, it's our job to do our job. And I feel confident enough that if we follow the existing statutes, that the worst that can happen is that the preliminary injunction is not issued, and we go forward with the merger, and the warning is superseded.
Which warning is superseded?
The U 32 budget.
The local school budget.
The local school budget is superseded.
So you're proposing to go forward with that?
Yes.
And wait to see what happens with the merger.
Well, we can't, yeah, at this point, the transitional board is adjourned to an event certain, as I understand it. The issuance of the preliminary injunction, or non-issuance of that. So that date is, nobody knows what that date is. However, we do know that there's a critical date of April 15th. So to me, the, just the sensible and safe thing to do is to warn at least our local budget, so we have that covered in case the judge, in this, you know, sort of either-or situation, in case the judge does issue the preliminary injunction, that, okay, we've got that set, we're on track. And if he doesn't, then we just, you know, it's Plan B, or Plan A, or whichever, you know, it's merge budget versus the school budget. I know it, it's not pretty, it's not elegant, but I just, I just want to build in that redundancy so that we don't get stuck in a bind without a budget, with everybody sort of saying, this is horrible, what a mess, et cetera.
Okay, now I'm hearing four options. One is we could do nothing. Two is we could seek a recommendation before we do anything else. Three, we could warn, as you say, and take a vote and see what happens. And fourth would be, I also heard you suggest this, warn and get a recommendation.
Yeah.
And if the recommendation comes back that this has no legal basis, don't do this, then we really have to consider sending that one in.
Well, then we would have to reconsider the warning, but I mean...
Is there any reason that that fourth option couldn't be seek advice and then warn?
The problem is time. I, and also, I mean, I have to confess, when this was originally built as an emergency meeting, and I guess it's since been sort of tamped down to a special meeting, I thought, oh, great, we're going to do something, because it's an emergency, and in an emergency, you do something. Seeking advice doesn't really rise to that level for me. I mean, I think advice is really important, but I think the sense of urgency is correct. The reason why we're here on a lousy night on school vacation week, I think there is, there is important work to be done, so I would just say, let's go for it and do it. And if we, if in the, you know, in the course of time, we discover that we need to shift something, then we do that. But at least we have something scheduled that will give us budget.
See the logic of that. Why did you pick April 9th?
It's a Tuesday. I briefly looked at the schedules of the towns, and it didn't appear, there didn't appear to be anything. It's a week, it's one week before the April vacation, is that correct? Or two weeks?
One, it's one.
Or maybe one.
So it doesn't coincide with April vacation, and it's 42 days from now, not including today and not including April 9th, which gives perhaps, I might just sort of mention my one concern about this, is that it becomes a bit of a forcing event for two towns, that Middlesex and Eastmont Pillier, they might feel obliged or kind of dragged into doing the same thing on the same day.
Why not Worcester?
Doesn't Worcester vote from the floor?
They don't have an article on their town meeting to talk about budgets.
Ah.
So it'd be a special meeting. Will Sonny from the Secretary of State confirmed that to Will Baker today.
Uh huh, interesting. So they could, they would vote...
They would have to have a special town, a special school district meeting, town, a floor?
Floor meeting, yeah.
To do it.
Right, and that would not work, I would not imagine, on April 9th. But Worcester would be able then to do it?
I wouldn't work on April 9th.
Because people work during the...
We've had, we've had public meetings of ilk on a weekday night.
Ah, Worcester, great. Yeah, okay.
I think it's a good point that we should be thinking about the other towns. Two of them are going to meet later this week. Eastmont Pillier met on Friday.
Yes.
What did they do?
They decided to seek counsel of Chris Leopold.
Correct.
They're willing to work with others as long as on the limited scope if they vote their motion forward, which I brought those minutes with me. Middlesex is meeting on Wednesday night at 6 o'clock, and Worcester is meeting at 6 o'clock on Thursday night.
And have you reached out to Chris Leopold? Do you have a sense of his time?
Yeah, he's willing to make his time as soon as we can.
Okay.
And as soon as, as soon as we can get people together. I said, I talked to him today, and he said...
Eastmont Pillier's not looking at dates yet, or in terms of...
They said that on Friday at their meeting, they were willing to work with others, so they said, let's try to pull this together so we can share the expense, but they also understood if it didn't work, it didn't work, so they were being a little flexible, but felt, you know, wanting to get this done as well.
Tell me more about 30 to 40 days. Is that really a window?
It's a window for posting the warning. You can post the warning 30 to 40 days.
So the drop dead date in a way is somewhere around April, or March 14th?
Ah, hold on. If you want, off of what date?
Off the April 15th. If we want to, we want to have a vote of...
So if you want, if, well, let's, can we go back to Scott's date so we don't get so confused here?
Sure.
April 9th.
Should be the Tuesday before the 15th, yeah.
Right, which would be the Tuesday before the 15th. You would have to have a date of the 10th or 11th, because there's 31 days. I literally like to count these things to make sure I don't have a math problem.
I did the same thing.
Yeah, it's like, I literally, because I made a math problem too much with, you know, I thought, I think I'm pretty good at math.
Say it again, March...
So it would be March 10th or 11th. 10th is a Sunday, 11th is a Monday. You would have to post it by, I want to count that, just to be sure, and if you want me to do that right now, I can do that.
Why don't we say March 8th, just...
And then for the 15th, you'd be looking at, you know, the, that's a Monday, so you would be looking at the 15th or 16th of March. There's 31 days of March, so you should be...
So what I'm hearing is that we could still make this March, or this April 9th, which I think makes a lot of sense, make that date if we make a decision by March 8th, which is what, end of next week? Right?
Yeah.
Friday next week.
And if you were going to go with the budget that you were presented and recommended, we can spin that up pretty quickly into a warning.
Yeah, how long would that take a day?
No, hour.
An hour.
We're that close. We've had dual, as we, as we talked about the Assembly Committee back in August, press dual, dual options, so we've got both ways.
It's been prepped both ways.
It's prepped both ways.
Speaking for myself, I would not be comfortable going forward without legal counsel. No, I don't mind the idea of warning, just to get, get the ball rolling, and then get a recommendation and go from there. However, I do see the logic of syncing up with the other schools, in terms of, of the legal advice, if we all choose the same counsel, and the vote date.
Yeah.
I concur.
Me too, and I think that using the attorney we used prior, like Chris Leopold, might expedite the process.
Well, yeah, especially if Eastmont Pillier's already selected, there's, that would at least be two schools working now.
Yeah.
So then, if we went in that, with that scenario, we would be calling another meeting of this board, Eastmont Pillier, hopefully, and maybe others, within the next 10 days.
Another emergency meeting?
Well, I wouldn't use the emergency, these are special.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
According to the statute.
Uh huh.
Emergency is one that you have to have within 24 hours, you don't, so you post as soon as you can.
Uh huh.
If it's a nice plan, I hesitate to name them in the process, because we can't speak for them, but...
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, my, I mean, if it, if it all works out in that wonderful, I hesitate to say utopian way, but I would just like to know that if there are any glitches along the way, if, that we have to do this, that we need a budget, and...
I mean, we maybe possibly can't get a quorum together in the next 10 days, that could happen.
Yeah.
So is there any logic to calling the, warning the April 9th now, sort of holding it advanced?
I would, I would feel much better about that.
So just a point of information, I'm not trying to stop you from either way, or just point of information, you have a meeting scheduled for March, the Wednesday after town meeting.
Oh, we do?
Of this group, on March 6th.
Mm-hmm.
So just take it as it is.
Yeah. Yeah, it's still, it's still, kind of feels wrong to me, that even such a basic step as warning our budget, we have to seek legal counsel. It's just something that we've done, that's one of the basic, most elemental functions of the school board.
Things have changed though.
Yeah, but they...
You started, you started off the comments, speaking to, trying to remember how you were, speaking, acting under the laws we understood it. That law has changed. The law that used to have us call that meeting is no longer the law of the land, for, for the time being.
But it is, that's the thing.
For the time being, it is...
It hasn't been repealed. It hasn't, the, the new law, the land, is, is like hanging there in the air, whereas the statutes are there, there, and as far as I know, nothing has changed there.
Well, as far as I know, I don't know enough to be confident moving forward without the advice of a decent lawyer.
Yeah, I think, I think that most of the board is there, but, I mean, I did, I am sympathetic to the idea of getting it on the, in the books. However, if we are, if we have a meeting, I didn't realize we had a meeting on March 6th. I mean, that, my suggestion would be, let's go with that date if we were the attorney. I'm quite sure we're going to have a quorum, and we could even potentially do a carousel.
I'll bring you a warning, prep, ready to go, Scott. I, we need to bring you back together to have you approve the warning. I would like you to do that, I don't think you want to just give me blame, language, responsibility to do that, and I need you all to sign that.
Yeah.
It's not in my authority to approve a warning.
And I would...
Either way, I mean, if, even if you said we want a warning tonight, I, that might make sense, so when the next time we're getting together to approve the warning?
Yeah.
Like, I'm serious, I'm going, it'll take us an hour to prep the warning, but I need all of you to approve it and authorize it to go out.
So are these the instructions that we're giving Bill then?
To, to, it could be, I have our motion yet, but...
I, I would move that. We instruct Bill to prepare a warning for our next meeting on March 6th, did you say?
Can do that.
For an April 9th date?
Right.
And that will provide a chance for the others, the other towns, based those that are meeting between now and then, will have a chance to react to this initiative.
Sort of gets that.
And will be able to kind of say, hey, that sounds good, or, well, wait a second, what about another day that will serve better?
Sure, like that idea.
Okay.
You want to say a little more about the warning, the warning of the...
Of the U 32 budget for 20, for the school year 2019, 2020, as, as, what did we do? Did we pass it? Did we transmit it? Did we...
You'll need to, you'll need to approve it. We've done that, most years, we usually, when you approve it, we write the warning to the same meeting.
Okay.
When we brought the budget to you, you recommended it to the transition board. It's all...
We recommended it, thank you.
To the transition board, is all you did at that time?
Right.
You didn't approve the budget?
No.
It wasn't ours to approve?
We just sort of, we waved it on with our blessings, yeah.
I will, I will be asking you, not necessarily at that meeting, but somewhere before April 15th, where you stand on authorizing contracts to be sent out as a board. And you'll probably want to talk to the attorney about that as well.
Okay. Is that part of the brief for the attorney?
Yes, because you have a mixture of teacher master agreement and statutes and fiscal requirements within the state, which are all statutes as well, that you need to make decisions as a board.
We have a motion. Can you please read it back?
I just have the move to instruct the superintendent to prepare a warning of the U 32 budget for the school year 2019, 2020, for the next board meeting, March 6th, for an April 9th vote.
Okay, and we're not at this point dealing with the legal counsel piece, but it may be cleaner to just leave it at that for the moment. Is there a second?
No second.
Discussion?
We kind of did.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes. Is there a motion on legal counsel, potentially also for March 6th?
Maybe another time, so I don't want to give you that.
Okay, okay, okay.
Because I'm trying to coordinate calendars right now, where I think, what I've heard from Eastmont Pillier, and talking with Chris McVey, the chair of Middlesex, and Will Baker, the chair of Worcester, they want to do it as soon as possible.
Okay.
So, I just want, I don't want any illusions of...
They want to do what, as soon as possible?
Meet with the attorney as soon as possible. Or if there's a collaborative approach, if not, do the independent...
So is there a motion about seeking legal counsel?
Yes. I, I'm not sure what to say, we're...
So it'd be a...
We've got those two bodies seeking legal counsel also.
The only way to seeking legal counsel right now is Eastmont Pillier.
Eastmont. Oh, I guess what we're looking for is to seek legal counsel around the legitimacy of this whole nation.
So before you make a motion, may I read something to you?
Sure, yes, please.
The Eastmont Pillier Board, in their motion, they said, was to seek legal counsel for advice regarding next steps on budgets and teacher contracts. Rubin made the motion to select Chris Leopold as legal counsel for advice in sharing Eastmont Pillier Elementary School remains operational, including advice on teacher master agreement, and presenting a budget for Act 1920. Motion passed unanimously.
I would mimic their motion, replacing me and U 32 for Rubin and Eastmont Pillier.
A second, eh?
Okay, second, discussion?
Should we think about the, actually, a second opinion?
Like we see double the legal counsel? From the guy who said he didn't want to seek any opinion?
Yeah. The... Yeah, the, the reason is because lawyers are not unlike doctors in that regard. And it might be nice to have a stereoscopic view and, and to spread the wealth so that, you know, we, we see all the lawyers.
And doubling the cost.
I look at it as we're in uncharted...
Right.
Water.
Right.
And so I agree with that second opinion.
So the question would be, who in that case? Is there sort of a... I, I don't really know these lawyers and how they, when, when they come out their, their material, from what kind of perspective.
We're not seeking a legal, I mean, a written opinion, it sounds like, or is, is that what Eastmont Pillars?
No, they're not seeking, we're just, we're, we're in conversation. Call and hopefully be on site.
Okay.
Be here. I, I, I mean, we didn't really get into it that much. I would highly suggest that you have attorneys here if you're gonna have two attorneys.
That's, that seems pretty unusual to have two, two attorneys in the room.
Yeah, I'm just raising it as, as a consideration.
Well, there is a motion on the floor.
Who seconded it, sorry?
I did.
Okay, I think.
So... Would need to, need to be amended or have a second, a second action, I think this.
Yeah, I, I sort of wanted to flush out people's opinions.
I guess, like, you, you like it. I do, but I'm, I'm thinking about the, the timeline prior to having two attorneys in the room. So that they could flush it out and, and, and come back to us as something legit. But I'm genuinely curious as to what they would find and recommend.
Yeah.
Okay, Carl.
While I understand the drive to seek out two opinions for the sake of strengthening our understanding, from... I guess the reason I'm seeking out the legal information to begin with is really sort of the safety net to our assumptions to the course of action we're taking. And to my mind, having, you know, being able to point to a legal opinion in terms of my decision-making in Representative Worcester, that's adequate to me. I have heard enough concern about expenses over lawyers from our populace in the last couple of weeks that I am not inclined to spend twice as much as I need to feel comfortable moving forward myself.
Yeah, I, I...
So...
There, there is an aspect of the definition of control.
I wanna err on, on, I wanna err on my own safety net and the frugality of the taxpayers. Frugality of the active taxpayers.
That's a good point.
Yep.
Again, um...
I guess that solves the quorum needing two lawyers.
Yeah, I, I think what Carl says is very sensible. Revisiting my experience of, of working on a lot of these issues where there has been legal advice from time to time, I've noted that the legal advice tends to be in the form of, "No, you really can't do that," or "This is really kind of problematic." And it always seems to be in, work in the direction of suppressing action. What I would be very happy to have is actually an attorney advise us, how do we make sure, given the universe of possibilities that is out there that we might have to face, how do we make sure we have a budget going into the next school year?
So I was gonna ask that question when they're here, when I can forward that question to them. I think for sure at least they probably just found it.
Yeah.
You know, but that's what, I think, that's my number one question.
Yeah.
And without the voters, we can't guarantee anything. So I don't know the legal opinion match at that point, if we can't, if we can't get a budget voted on.
I just think you need to be advised statutorily what your options are.
Yeah.
And that's what you should have advice on. You're meant, the board is going to make the decision.
Yeah, and that's right, and, and that's what we have to do. That's our job.
I'll leave Chris McVeigh says legal advice is opinion.
And you're exactly right. We should be asking for what our options are and what the risk associated with the various options are. Because attorneys are, are risk averse, and, you know, you just have to have that, keep that in mind. All right, so we have a motion and a second?
Could we repeat the motion?
Yeah, you wanna hear it?
Wow, yeah, it's just, it's the same verbiage that Eastmont Pillar used. So Carl, what he moved to select Chris Leopold as legal counsel for advice on ensuring U thirty-two remain operational, including advice on the teacher-master agreement and presenting a budget for FY nineteen, twenty.
Great. Any further discussion? Okay, all of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Epstein? Okay, so that passes. Anything else on this topic? All right, so you'll be in touch about...
I have the intention, I'm gonna be talking with Chris tomorrow, so I told him today that tomorrow I'd start talking about dates because I wanna find out where this board landed. So at least I can get any two boards, so, you know, we have at least two. I'm gonna start putting dates together. You know, we'll see if we're Middlesex and Worcester.
Right. And what are the, are those meetings Wednesday and Thursday?
Wednesday and Thursday. I'm really shooting for Monday or Tuesday.
There's actually gonna be some people here on Monday night, right, Miss Rubin?
On Monday night.
So that's a possibility as well.
I'm shooting for Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, Tues, Tuesday's time meeting.
I understand, I understand what it is. I'm trying to get to you's quick, the information.
Okay, so I had asked Scott to bring us up to speed, if you could, about what's happening in Calis with regard to the property there.
Right, uh, well, I think members of the Articles Committee, which is just the two of us, are aware of this, but Calis, the Calis Select Board and the Calis School Board have been meeting together to look at securing, once again, securing rights of Calis townspeople to use of the property after, you know, a possible consolidation. So there are basically three documents that the town, that the municipality of Calis's lawyer has drawn up. His name, just for your info, is Jim Barlow. One of them is an easement, one of them is a school use agreement, and one of them is, is a purchase option, is our call. And, and Bill, please feel free to correct me if I, if I say anything unclear or incorrect. The easement would essentially allow the town of Calis to continue using the Calis Elementary School for the same purposes that Calis Elementary is used for now, say, emergency shelter, location for town meeting, for different town board and commission meetings, that sort of thing. What the easement does is essentially, and, and this is why the, the lawyers were brought in to kind of scrutinize this, it would, the easement would convey with the property to the new consolidated district. And my understanding is that the lawyers found nothing wrong with such an arrangement per se. The issue was equity with the other towns, that the other towns, you know, by their eyes ought to have something comparable.
Or a chance for that.
Well, a chance for that, exactly. The school use agreement is, does not, well, I guess the agreement goes with the school, but it, it, there's a certain term to it?
I believe so. I have to tell you, Scott, that I stayed a little, I stayed out of it, trying not to trip it up.
That's absolutely fine.
I know that Scott Cameron has given back advice, and his, his partner has done the advice as well as a real estate attorney. So...
Right.
He, you know, I don't have his advice in front of me, so I don't wanna paraphrase from what I don't remember.
Sure, that's...
I know that there were some concerns that Scott Cameron brought up to the Calis School District.
Right.
The, the, the way I recall, and I might be getting this wrong, that the easement was basically, you know, as you say, there's, it, it, it seems fine on a surface as long as the other towns are aware of it and have the similar option...
Yes.
To create something. The other two pieces seem like that there was actually a diminishment in value of, of the property and was, was more problematic from the attorney's point of view on this. So, I don't, I...
Yeah, that's sort of the first option, the school, the option to purchase agreement that would convey as well. These are, these are all issues that we deal with in the Articles Committee.
Right.
That the town is proposing to kind of incorporate into the property prior to consolidation. So it's, it's essentially dragging the, what, what might otherwise be Articles language into the, sort of the, the property...
That's where, that's where Scott Cameron got his piece about property value, was if ever, they couldn't strip them out of the easement.
Right, right, as opposed to Articles.
You can't, you can't strip it out of deed, so if the town ever wanted to sell it, because the town has first refusal, they would still have a hard time selling it, because they could diminish the value.
So anyway, I, I guess, I just wanted to make sure that other, other board members were aware of this. It seems significant, and wanted to get a sense of what were the next steps for Calis? Are they, are they, are they planning to vote on this in the near future or...
Well, there seems to be some thought that it could, this, this could be done without a, without a town vote, just between the school board and the select board. But I don't, my understanding is that the Calis School Board is not yet ready to do that. They wanna make sure that everything's on the up and up and, and kosher. This was at least my communication with Susanna.
Yeah.
To that effect.
And you know, do they have a plan to reach out to other school boards or other towns?
I, I think so. I think Dorothy, in particular, wanted to share this methodology with the Articles Group to make sure that everybody was aware and was able to kind of think about it.
Carl, can I ask a question?
Please.
Does this have anything to do with U thirty-two and the property here?
I, it shouldn't. It shouldn't affect the property.
So this isn't a matter for our school board?
No, this is, this is sort of a...
Just, just as a... I just, I was, that's fine. I just wondered why our school board was considering it.
Oh, because we consider everything.
It was informational.
It's informational and, and because there's representatives from other towns here. Gotcha.
Target of opportunity, yeah.
Understood.
Okay, any other questions about that or discussion?
Not for this meeting.
All right, is there anything else? For this agenda?
Enough.
If not, I...
May I just ask how we're communicating the results of this to our community? I, I'm just asking for board communication's sake. I mean, I feel like, I, I'm asking as a community member right now, actually, if you don't mind. I'd like for our communities to know what's happening so that they're aware.
Sure. Is something beyond our normal front porch forum?
Nope, I mean, I just called for it and it's...
We, we actually have town meeting when we...
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
But I, I do think a front porch forum posting would make some sense.
You're always writing stuff, Carl. Do you want me to do something?
Yeah, then, yeah, I'd be happy with that. You wanna draft something and run it by me, and we'll get it out by the end of the week? I mean, a few sentences, I think.
I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah, it's...
It's a good idea, and it will be our talking points for town meeting, right? Because we're all going to town meeting and talking about something.
Well, I'd be going to town on this. Never mind, okay.
All right, Scott, so thank you, volunteering for that. Anything else? Our guests, do you have any final comments or questions for us?
I, I certainly appreciate hearing the conversation and the deliberations that you're going through. It's really challenging. And thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. It's such an awful day.
I wish you'd please drive safely on your...
Okay, if that's it, then we'll adjourn by consensus at six fifty.